Mr. Harris, Delion, and what else if we are online.
Oh, okay.
Then we have, then we have four.
This is my next question.
You need to remove the blur from the video.
Thank you.
Well, well, Kevin, good work. Just work. And James, James.
Yeah, we're fine.
Yeah, yeah, that'll work. We're gonna start recording.
Yeah, we're ready to play.
Oh, we are.
We're good.
Oh, great. Welcome, everyone, to the regular Planning Commission meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. We are here in the third floor conference room. I am Wayne Beeler. I am the chairman. With me here is Peter Ryan. And online, we have Wilson Fisi, the co-chair, and James Harris and Nelson De Leon. So we, we do have a core, so we can, we can conduct some business. The, uh, do I hear a motion to accept the Planning Commission agenda as distributed? Peter? Second?
Second.
And Nelson? Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it? Okay, there seems no one here for public comment, so we will move on to our plan reviews. The first is the Schaefer subdivision final inspection and escrow lease. I'll turn it over to Jer, to Jerome for the, for the update.
Thank you. Uh, this was a review that was conducted on November tenth, two thousand and twenty five. This is the Schaefer subdivision plan, which was reviewed and approved by uh, the Planning Commission some time ago. This involves the address of one fourteen, one sixteen, and one eighteen Belvedere Street. Uh, this, this project has gone through the municipal improvements agreement and it had, we did conduct the initial review and release some time ago, which was May twentieth, two thousand and twenty four. Uh, we did conduct an additional site inspection during the maintenance period on November seventh, two thousand and twenty five, and we have found that everything is in good order. We were holding approximately four thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, uh, which is fifteen percent of the construction costs uh, for the, for the maintenance period. Everything is acceptable, and therefore, since the eighteen months has, is going to expire at the end of this month, we are recommending final release of the balance of the, of the money, which would be four thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars, eighty-five cents minus any fees that have been incurred.
Okay, very good. Does, um, uh, any of the commissioners have a question about this plan? Hearing none, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the final inspections and escrow release? Number five.
Motion. James?
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, um, let me read the full, the full motion. Uh, to approve the final inspections and escrow release number five for the Schaefer subdivision land development plan as per the terms detailed in the review letter issued by Hawk Valley Associates dated November tenth, two thousand and twenty five. And do I hear a second? Peter?
Second.
The question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it? Next up, we have the, um, the Third Street Shopping Center, Eddie, at eighteen fifty-three Center Avenue. It's not really, well, yeah, it's actually eighteen fifty-three North Third Street. Anyway, uh, which is sketch plan. Alan Shuman is here today, uh, so we will, uh, we'll let Alan do his thing.
Okay, great. I think all of you have gotten the, the full set of land development plans. I'm gonna hand out some renderings and some AI-generated, uh, renderings to all of the. Hopefully, I have enough for all core members here. So what we're talking about is the Brownfields Glidden site. Former Glidden site. Uh, twenty acre site. This is just the development from the south thirteen acres. The north remaining acres is going to be subdivided off at the railroad tracks and redeveloped by the Burke County Industrial Development Authority. Okay, I want to check. So thank you. So this is the shopping center on the south side. Again, Brownfield site, uh, only two major things we're looking for on this. Because it's a Brownfield site, the DEP five thousand page environmental report is back, and they want a hundred percent impervious there due to the lead contamination on the site. And, uh, we need subdivision approval to carve it off, uh, into two parcels at the railroad tracks, which is a I forget the correct term, but, uh,
It's a natural boundary.
Natural boundary, there we go. Uh, other than that, I think we meet all of the basic requirements, and the plan is committed and submitted, and we are open to questions.
Last, last month, uh, uh, Jeremy from Burke's IDA was here. And, uh, yeah, well, well, if we spoke about anything specific, I think we, we actually like spoke a little bit more about the part that's being split off. Oh, in that, in that, um, parking lot across the street.
Parking lot across the street, that's not part of this development, uh, but it is planning, we are planning on developing that at the same time. We just don't know what exactly is gonna go there yet.
Think we went over, went over everything with Jeremy's, but, uh, let me turn it over to the, uh, to the commissioners to see if they have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Will.
Okay, so, well, thank you for the, to the applicant for a sketch plan, which we always appreciate. It's now the second one we're getting here. Um, I look forward to seeing those renderings, which we can't see online yet. I know we discussed that only the southern portion was going to be developed. I don't remember if we talked about a subdivision. So I guess my question is, how does that work in terms of the, the railroad right-of-way? Is that like a separate parcel, or is that on your, on your, is it an easement, or is it? Would it be parceled out, or how would that work exactly?
The lot that will be split off is north of railroad. And the railroad is a natural barrier. Uh, and that will not be part of either of the lots, am I correct?
Uh, I believe that's a separate, separate parcel.
Will, the, the other, the other parcel, uh, or the undeveloped parcel can be capable of being developed by itself. It has its, uh, enough area, land area, as well as spot coverage. Does a railroad own the track area? Or is it?
I think the railroad owns the track area.
I believe they do.
But obviously not the north and the south parcels.
Right.
So in other words, that this, this is two non-contiguous parcels bifurcated by the, the railroad parcel.
That's correct.
Correct. Well, I believe it was one parcel before the railroad came in a hundred years ago.
Right. I just, thank you. I just wanted to understand if it's just the right-of-way with an easement, or if it's actually a separate parcel, because that, that's all unusual. So, so thank you. And I, I see Public Works is on it, I don't know if they have anything to add before, before anything. That's all I have for now.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Will, this is Tim. Yeah, hey, Charlie. Hey, um, yeah, I, I, I was looking at that too, and it looked like a good sketch plan, and I didn't really have too much to say, but I did. I think that's a good question that, um, that Will brought up, is to, to get an understanding of where the railroad right-of-way is. I see it's on the sketch plan. Um, I think, was, is it Ludgate that, that did the drawings? Did, who, who was the surveyor? Yeah. Yeah, so I know from my own experience in the city, and Charlie, you probably know this too, it's sometimes really hard to understand where the right-of-way is for the railroad. Uh, I don't know what the experience was for this property, but I know when we did their Skooka River Trail on River Road, you know, down on River Road, it, it was difficult. We had to go and do a quiet title to actually establish where it was. So I don't know if you could talk about, you know, do you really have a, a good idea where that right-of-way is?
That's just what it says on the survey.
Yeah, I believe the, the survey plan depicts the actual situation with the, with the ownership. I think, as I recall, the railroad property is centered on railroad track or tracks, I guess there's only one left. That is actually a separate parcel. The two remaining parcels happen to be under the same ownership. And when, when Glidden was there, of course, they operated both sides of the railroad train. Uh, they had facilities on both, on both property.
Okay.
So these two differ by the, there's, there's nothing sketched here?
Yeah, that was just AI threw that in. So it also, yeah, it also did away with the stadium. So we're not, we're not having any, uh, any dealings with the stadium we're going to get.
That's stadium property right there.
Now, on the, on the other side, made it all trees.
All right, but, but you are intending to build here.
No, that's not part of the problem.
That is not part of the problem.
Yeah.
One question. You say that there was lead contamination?
So there is a whole lot of different chemical contamination there, which is why DEP is requiring it to be fully impervious to surface.
And there, I assume there's going to be monitoring, Will, some of that?
They're, they're already, uh, parking lot is designed to go around, uh, certain of those, they're varicers, they will remain. There's also vapor, you know, uh, Liberty is handling all the fire metal, uh, ongoing monitoring for mitigation there. Uh, there's vapor, uh, vapor testing sensors wells, I don't know, across the street in some of the residential homes, on some of the neighboring properties. Uh, on that property, there's, there's, there's a vast array of sensor monitoring, uh, which will be ongoing due to the hundred fifty years it was a lead paint facility.
And, um, I assume that also means that all of the, um, uh, all of the shopping, uh, the, all of the shopping areas will be just your basically pour a concrete pad right on top and then
Correct.
No digging and.
Uh, well, there's gonna be digging, the soil can't be moved off-site, uh, you know, codes is clean code requires us to branch in for new utilities, we gotta fill in with either crushed, uh, stone, or you can't just put dirt filled back in the holes. Uh, so there will be soil moving around on site. We do have DEP approval, and as long as whatever soil is there when we start is not transported off, contamination stays on site and is capped with the, the pavement or parking lot, then we're fine.
How do you prevent airborne particles or, do you see any issue with that?
Uh, DEP gave no requirements for, for anything.
By creating the impervious cover, you're basically sealing off the property. And who holds long-term liability contamination underneath that, something we're, uh?
Uh, so I'm not sure the details of Act Two. Uh, I know I'm not responsible for it moving forward, uh, as long as we follow the DEP approved plan. So I don't know whether that's can or can't, I don't know the pass chain there.
It, it might be good to explain the Act, Act Two, you mentioned Act Two, Alan. Act Two permitting, the Planning Commission has had Act Two permitting projects in the past.
Okay, uh, so for those of you who don't know, Pennsylvania has an Act Two, uh, which allows somebody to take a contaminated site through the redevelopment process, and it releases the developer and new owner from any liability from past contamination, so long as the contamination, there's no new contamination, uh, added to the site. So as a new developer, new owner of the site, I would be responsible if those wells picked up. You know, all of a sudden lead levels went up or something like that, because I added to it, then I'd be liable, as long as we're not adding anything to it. The liability stays with the past ownership of the property.
What about stormwater?
Uh, stormwater, you see, we have retention ponds built there, and then obviously the overflow of that going to the giant culvert that runs through the north side of the site.
So there's no infiltration, it's just all retained?
Yep.
That's right.
I, I assume you'll be filtering, you'll, you'll do some sort of filtering. The outfalls will be filtered to meet the, um, requirement for, um, water quality. That, that's typically what's done. We, we've seen this before. Yeah, we saw it before on the Dell Vow over at the Buttonwood Gateway Project. That was the last big act two. And, uh, and then again, on the, uh, River Road Extension Project, Charlie, I'm sure you remember that. Uh, there in Lincoln Street, at Lincoln Street Extension, we did, we did a pond there, and that was sealed for the same reason, because it had municipal waste and some, it actually had some, uh, contamination, we had to actually remove it. But that was a sealed pond, so it, it does, it was, it's filtering.
Windsor and Redder.
Yes.
Yeah. Basically, the entire site is gonna be sealed off, and that's what is required, right? Um, does anyone have, uh, any other questions of Alan or, or Charlie? This will be built in one, one shot? What we see illustrated?
Oh, here. Uh, so obviously, we're not building three buildings at one time, we'll be built one building at a time, but all one development, yes. So one person. So we're hoping to get all the approvals here and be under construction on the west building by, uh, fall of two thousand and twenty six. Uh, the east building by fall of two thousand and twenty seven, and then, uh, the north building in two thousand and twenty eight. Hopefully by the end of two thousand and twenty eight, or a hundred percent.
When IDA was here to present the sketch plan as well, uh, they had mentioned that they were going to tinker around with it, or or is this the final result?
Uh, uh, this is the final rendering, we're not gonna do any updated renderings, but if you look, it, it does. This was, the renderings were done off the original plans for the site. Uh, we now have a couple of drive-throughs, the long building along Burn Street is now actually divided into two or three, uh, buildings, so the drive-throughs can go through there. You have the current plan, but the rendering doesn't a hundred percent match that plan.
Okay. I think, I think Jeremy was referring to the north side. Variations of that. Yeah, they, they said that they were going to be taking it back to their office and, uh, and. So they're gonna develop that site.
Yeah, that's completely separate.
Okay. Got it. Do you take ownership of, of the site? IDA currently owns it, or?
Uh, IDA currently owns it, we have an option, uh, so long as we get our approvals to forward with the purchase. We have the option to buy the entire site for just the south side, the only plant on Percy, the south side. And the parcel across the park here.
All right, um, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Nice, bro. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, with that. Brownfield site, this condition is, if they heard our environmental factor, that built into some type of it. As long as it remains pervious, now water can pass through and grab whatever's in the soil and taken. That's, that's the problem.
Yeah, DEP is looking forward, does move forward as soon as possible, because the faster we can go forward, the safer the site becomes.
So then your next step is a preliminary plan. It also removes what has been an eyesore for many years. As you know.
Yep.
Yeah. And it's a, and it's, it's a big project, just like, just like the, the Mall Street project was where the STEM High School was, and that, that took quite a few years to to put together, but Alan put it together and made that made the deal, so, so that school district could, could build the STEM Academy, which, uh, is moving forward quite nicely. So, uh, so once again, thank you, Al.
Sure.
Um, for, for coming in and, uh, taking on these, uh, difficult projects. The, these are certainly not easy.
Well, this one's a little easier than some of the others.
Thank you.
Got Charlie on board, Charlie's a pro. Well, and we got Peter here, so be this biggest, biggest site in the state, I think, so, biggest for the project, so looking forward to it.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, Al, we'll move on to the we'll move on to the Reading School District, twelfth and Marion Elementary. And, uh, I'll hand it over to Jerome for the updates, since the rest is here. Um, this is a, uh, the twelfth and Marion Elementary School Land Development Plan. This is a final, uh, land development plan review. We previously reviewed a preliminary plan for this property. Uh, this property is located at twelve hundred North Twelfth Street. Uh, it is located within the R three zoning district. Uh, it has, this application has been revised and submitted. It does contain a stormwater management plan, erosion and sedimentation control plan, and, uh, other, uh, information such as the architectural renderings for this site. Uh, the following, uh, there were comments that were specifically made towards, uh, the parking, loading, and, uh, and property accessibility, uh, which have been, uh, provided, this is a cleanup in the previous plan that was submitted for the preliminary. Uh, the existing curbs, sidewalks, and ramps along the external streets are in good condition, and we see that no modifications are gonna be necessary unless things are, uh, things happen during the construction sequence. Uh, but we will need to further discussion with Public Works to verify if funds should be escrowed for that, those improvements. Uh, the plan will, uh, involve sanitary sewer, uh, improvements, and it's our understanding that the applicant has provided documentation regarding the existing and proposed wastewater flows. A planning module, uh, shall be reviewed by the Public Works Department. Uh, the, uh, the plan, of course, has also public water, and those, uh, plants have been forwarded to the, uh, to Rawa. Uh, the fire rescue department is also in the process of reviewing, uh, this project. They did review the preliminary plan. Um, and also, uh, we have reviewed the stormwater management plan and report, which we have several items on here that, uh, need to be addressed prior to municipal approval. There is an erosion and sedimentation control plan, and the Burke County Conservation District shall review it. Uh, we will require that the letter of adequacy be issued prior to municipal approval. Uh, the, any waivers required for this project would need to be, uh, resolved prior to municipal approval. I do not have any listing of any of it are needed, I think they were obtained during the preliminary plan stage. A municipal improvements agreement will be required, as well as a stormwater management maintenance group will be required. This plan, final plan can be considered by the Planning Commission. Um, however, I, I think we could wait till they clean up a lot of these issues. Um, and then we could have more so a clean final plan approval process. Uh, do you have any comments, Tim?
Uh, yeah, I think, um, Jerome kind of, uh, you know, initiated some of that discussion here, the technical stuff. Um, for, for the sewer planning, I checked with our utility department, and they haven't seen any numbers yet on this. Is, uh, is, is that Aristides, are you, are you in the audience? Is someone here?
He's actually not here today.
Oh, is there anyone representing?
Yes, there are a few folks from the applicant online.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if they could speak to the technical items, I have some technical questions with the sewer modules. I, I, I checked, we haven't received anything here at Public Works that would either, you know, um, indicate that we gotta process a planning module, or if there's some justification for not needing any additional sewer planning. We, we, we don't know how to act on, in other words, we, we haven't been giving any instruction yet to act on the sewer, uh, planning for this project. So I just want you to know that, that, um, we, we should, we should receive something so we can give you a decision.
Great, yep, this is Elizabeth Hampshire with CHA. Um, I will relay that to Aristides, he couldn't be here tonight, but, um, I know they were working on that, so I will check in on the timeline, and we'll be sure to get something over to you shortly.
Elizabeth, can, can you tell us, will, will there be, in, in your estimation, a need for planning? With, with the expansion, the fifteen, what was it, fifteen hundred square feet?
I'm really not involved in the technical side. Um, actually, I was trying to wait for, um, our more senior architect who's been on this job, I was just listening in, but um, I, I can follow up with them on that and try to get you more information.
And, and if you need to do, you know, we often have technical meetings, you know, offline, so we don't bog down the meetings with a lot of technical discussion. Uh, we'd be open with that, because I do, I, I noticed that there's a number of questions about the stormwater management. I don't know if you're involved with that or not, if that's part of your scope.
Um, it's not, but I can, uh, try to set something up between, uh, Wilkinson and you, if, if that's something that you'd like to do, just to answer all these questions.
And, and Jerome and Simon and whoever else, uh, it, it's, it's pretty frequent that we do that when we have technical items, and if you notice on the Hawk Valley letter, there is quite a few stormwater items that's been reviewed, and I, I have some questions too in addition, so I think it would be appropriate to get those answered, and so you can clean this up as quickly as possible.
Yes, uh, Bob, our, our senior architect did share that letter with me today, so I'll get something set up.
Okay.
And Tim and Elizabeth, this is Bob Hayes from CHA, so I did get on to the site here. Um, there was supposed to be someone there from Wilkerson to represent them, Mr. Jackson, I believe, Ron Jackson, if I have the name right. Um, but we are, um, applying for the additional um, sewer based on our Okay. you know, increased enrollment and what we see in the future, we have some enrollment, um, documentation to up to two thousand and thirty-four. So we were looking for a different, additional EDUs. Um, but I thought that Wilkinson had processed that request.
Hmm.
Yeah, so I'm with. You have not seen that, right?
I, I, I'm, I'm with Public Works, Bob, and, and I have not seen it myself, and when I do, I usually pass it on to our utilities department here at Public Works, and then they, they, they work to process, they shepherd that through. Um, and, and I checked here today, they haven't seen anything yet.
Okay, but I did see the letter, and I did see the multiple, you know, requests for additional information, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah. Okay, um, yes, there is, the planning module has been submitted, uh, with the final plan application, so that, that's included, Tim. However, again, this is a short one, uh, we'll probably say that a, a few times, so we didn't really get a chance to possibly. Possibly. Delegators are provided to Public Works or Public Works may not have seen it as of yet. So I think that this this information is on the S T P site or the T P D site.
Right, well, I'll tell Robert it's there then and have him check that out.
That's that's one of the things.
Yeah, and 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 Bob, it would be good if Aristides or somebody over there would just kind of nudge us with an email. That would help too, because there's a lot going on right now.
All right, I will pass that on. I just confirmed the name was Ron Jackson. He is the engineer of record on this project for. Wilkinson. He was supposed to be attending tonight.
Okay, not not a big deal, just just so we get that notice and we know where it is. It's on our F T P site. I think we got enough to get things rolling on it.
Um, for sure. I'm sorry, I can send an email right now and I'll I'll copy everyone that way. They they have it.
Oh, that'd be good. I appreciate that, Emily.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, okay, any questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, hearing hearing none. Since we have some technical issues that could be taken care of and it is a short month. That. The recommendation from staff is tabled, so do I hear a. A motion to table and Peter gives the motion to table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mel.
You're welcome.
Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The both? Yeah, very good. We have this tabled, but I think. With the team that's working on this, I should be. These things on the review letter should should be taken care of rather quickly and we'll see this again next month.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much and we will then move on to. Keep my paperwork in order. We moved on to five B. Which is. The. Reading Parking Authority lot at two thirteen South Eleventh Street, which. Is formerly the Latisse Building. So I'll hand it over to Jerome for the update. Okay, this is a preliminary slash final plan application. That has been submitted on behalf of the Reading Parking Authority for. The new parking facility located at two thirteen South Eleventh Street. This project involves the parcel of land again located at two thirteen South Eleventh Street. It will contain sixty off-street parking spaces, forty-eight of those spaces will be standard spaces. Ten will be for recreation vehicles or trailer spaces and two will be handicap vehicle spaces. The project also has been submitted. With a stormwater management plan and report, as well as an erosion and sedimentation control plan. Site is located in the R three zoning district. The applicant did submit an application to the zoning hearing board. Which was. Which was approved with several conditions. And we have those noted on the plan based upon the Z H B decision. This information varies from the. Information that's contained on the plan. So therefore, we are recommending that the zoning office review. What the zoning hearing board has. Determined as the the. Conditions of approval or the or the variances specifically to make sure that those are accurate. And then the ones on the plan that are referenced appear to be either not applicable to zoning or. May apply to other ordinances, so let's, we will need to get that straightened out with the zoning office. A landscaping plan was submitted. The city arborist has reviewed this application and has informed. The. Planning Office that it is acceptable considering the decision of the zoning hearing board. The lighting plan has been also submitted. They will be utilizing existing infrastructure. And we had asked that our standard notes be applied to the plan regarding the reduction of. Exterior light. The plan also involves some. Site accessibility, parking and and loading issues that we did provide some comments towards. And we had, one of the things that we have. A question on was the applicant has provided ten spaces for the recreation vehicles. And trailers and those are ten by thirty-five. The question was, how do they get into the site and exit the site without? Creating havoc? So. We'll need to see some turning movements on.
So just. Sorry, regarding the recreational vehicles, their decision. Stated, number one in the conclusions of law was that no recreational vehicles are allowed to be parked on the subject property. So those spaces would need to be changed to be only for regular vehicles.
So. Yeah, that's, thank you, Emily. That makes a lot of sense now that we can. If if that's the case, then. They could probably add more parking spaces or standard spaces. Or handicap, or handicap, yes. So this will be, obviously you have the the applicant will need to address. There are some other technical issues that we have on there which are, which do apply to the type of paving as well as the. Offsite or sorry, the internal traffic control measures. The curbs, sidewalks and ramps on this project have been all recently completed. And the only thing that we have asked Public Works to look into would be that the minimum. Requirements for accessibility around the utility poles. We need at least thirty-six inches and we may not have that novel spot, so we would need to make modifications or bump outs. In order to facilitate. The. Site accessibility around the property. Fire and rescue will need to review the plan. We have several comments regarding stormwater management. Which. Appear to be able that they should be able to resolve in a timely manner. We again may want to have a technical meeting on this one as well in order to discuss those specific issues. The erosion and sedimentation control plan will need to go to the Berks County Conservation District. And a letter of adequacy will be required prior to final plan approval. We ask for a series of notes to be placed on the plan, which are our standard policy. There is a waiver which seems, and Emily, you might want to jump in on this. This is in regards to the Clear Site Triangle. It seems that the zoning hearing board has made a. Has granted zoning relief because it's. Right as of now, the third site triangles in both in the zoning as well as in the Saldo. So they're asking for a waiver, but since it was granted as part of the zoning hearing board application. It is redundant.
That's correct. They, that was one of the requests of relief. And so that was granted.
Okay. Finally, a municipal improvements agreement will be required for the site as well as a stormwater management maintenance. And that concludes the review. Very good. Tim, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I agree with Hawk Valley and Jerome and everything you went over. The, I think it's important to note that the city of Reading, as far as I know, City of Reading owns this property. And Reading Parking Authority is a leasur, and I think that's on the plan. I believe that's still the case. So it's it's kind of similar to the Reading Phillies stadium, you know, where. Reading Phillies is a leasur, so that's something to bear in mind when it comes time to do these agreements. Yeah, and.
Sorry, to put to put it on the record, the city of Reading does own the lot. They have an auto renewing lease with the Reading Parking Authority. That auto renews every June or July, and so that was approved, I think, in twenty nineteen by council.
Okay. Oh, so they're using it right now, I think, right?
Right now, I mean, it's not, it's not supposed to be used. There are some improvements that were made to it.
Yeah.
And so until they get the land development plan and everything, it's not used, but they have, they have the authority to to develop it for their parking.
Yeah, and as far as doing a technical meeting, yeah, I agree. One of the things I would like to see on this one, and actually on the Schuman and the other ones too, is if if an exemption of the. Drainage plan is applicable. I think they should get that and I think it should be on the record. That an exemption exists for the stormwater management planning for this lot. Because that clears any question as to whether or not this lot is required to meet. Rate control. If you have an exemption, you don't need to, and and you really shouldn't. Be trying to meet any type of rate control requirements, only the volume control requirements. That's water quality, stream bank protection and infiltration. And it's it's good to establish that because this, it it lives on after this plan is approved and the site's developed. Public Works is responsible for ensuring that it's maintained for, you know, forever. Under our M S four permit and we'd we'd hate to have people think that. These lots are required to have rate control when they really aren't, when when they, when the exemption. Requirements are relieved because of the way the ordinance is written, so it's something I'd like to bring up at these technical meetings.
Tim, I don't know what your schedule is going to be like, but I mean, I. I would, I think we should attempt to have these meetings, the technical meeting as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'm good this week. I'm I'm pretty open this week, Jerome. I don't know about your schedule. Yeah, sooner the better, I agree. Yeah, okay.
I will propose that, I will propose that we move the meetings to next week because this week is going to be quite busy for us. So if we can decide next week, okay.
Next week's Thanksgiving. I I I think if we can do it Thursday or Friday, I don't see them, these meetings taking that long.
Right.
Get a full schedule back back. That makes a lot of sense because all all the key people are involved.
Yeah, it'll keep things rolling.
You had us to include Michelle in this as well, too.
Yeah, I say it again, I think you said Michelle.
Yes, you had us to include Michelle as well.
I don't, I don't necessarily think Michelle needs to be there. I think it's important for. What me and Robert, Robert Roth, who's in our utilities division. And Jerome and maybe maybe some folks from Hawk Hawk Valley, I'm not sure. Emily, you. That that'd be enough. That's how we normally do it.
Do you have the consultants there as well?
Oh, yeah. Oh, especially them. Yeah, they they're the ones that were.
I would like to be there.
Oh, who is who's speaking?
Jan Miller from the Park Engineering.
Oh, very good. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were there. I I missed.
Yeah, I'm here for this plan. I'm listening to it.
Very good, okay, very good. Very definitely, Jan. Yeah, we'd we'd like to have you at the meeting if you're available Thursday or Friday.
I'm not available Thursday. I will be at the Conservation District Certification for inspections. All day long. Could we do it Friday?
Yeah, I think I think I'm good. I think. I think Jerome said he was good, too.
Yeah, I think I we can make that work if we need to.
Yeah.
We'll try. I I don't think Tim is going to be necessary, but I think Michael Hartman would pay.
Yeah, for stormwater. Yeah, there's some stormwater stuff that I think would be good to talk about.
I would be very interested, so please include me in the correspondence. I will make myself available.
Let's let's. Let's write this one up the platform.
I did have one question about this plan, since the zoning approvals are. Are so lengthy and we have them on page two of this plan set. Is it, would it be acceptable instead of putting all of them on sheet one? To refer to sheet two? Or do you still want them all listed on?
You could do that. I I I think it's nice to look to capture. The zoning variances that were reported that were applied. And if they're put in the same part of the plan as the zoning data. Or the charts, then that makes a lot of sense. But you can also put that add that same to refer to the plan sheet two, which contains the entire decision.
Okay.
But I think you have at least three or four that.
It would eliminate the errors.
And Jan, this is Tim. Do you think Chris Falenki would be available Friday? Or do you think you could, you know, answer the stormwater? I'm not sure what your background. I know Chris knows a lot about stormwater. I don't know if you have a stormwater background.
I do. I'm the one who did the stormwater for this, so I would be interested and I don't believe he would be available.
Oh, no, if you did it, that's fine. I I just, I'm not that familiar with, you know, with your back. I've known Chris for years, so I wasn't sure.
I will ask him, but I I really don't think he would be available Friday.
Okay.
You can certainly include him on the correspondence.
Yeah, no, if you're the author, that that'd be fine. Then your presence would be good.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. I will look into everything that you all brought up tonight. Nothing seems unmanageable here.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Will. Thank you. First of all, for full disclosure, as you mentioned. This build, this site was the. This parcel was the former site of the Latisse Headbag Factory, which several years ago was destroyed in a catastrophic fire. And. As the Planning Commission's representative. On the. Body Property Review Commission. I made a recommendation to the city to seize this parcel through eminent domain. Because. The city had incurred a huge, I think it was an eight hundred thousand dollar bill for the demolition and was unable to recover. And I made the suggestion so that at least it could obtain this parcel, the fair market value of it. As an offset of its losses. And the city manager at first was hesitant, but he, they did go along with this, so I'm glad to see that. And of course, you and I, Mr. Chairman, had independently made a recommendation for another use for this parcel. As as an alternate site for the city's proposed fire station. But for now, certainly a parking lot is not a bad, not a bad use for for this dense neighborhood. In fact, I was glad Public Works raised the the matter I was going to ask. Because I saw on the photographs that there are parking blocks there. I was wondering was if the Reading Parking Authority was already operating this. Site as a parking lot. Because of course they were not supposed to be doing that, so I hope they were not. Couple of technical questions. First, on the one. Page on the plan. I don't have it in front of me. There were two sets of contour lines. There was one. In like grayscale, seemed to be the more accurate, and then there were bold lines. That's more more straight at right angles or, I've never seen two sets before. It was confusing, so I don't know what the staff thinks of that. Have you seen that before? I would recommend. What's that?
Well, the 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 plan does contain the existing conditions, which is plan sheet three. And then there is a grading plan, which is plan sheet four. And it does show the the proposed contours and that's the straight lines you're referring to.
Oh, those are, oh, I was. Okay, you know what? I tried to magnify and it's sometimes very hard to see the small. So that would be the changes to the contours. Okay, that makes sense because I was wondering about. The slope here for stormwater drainage and all that, so that would be the proposed changes to it. Okay, so that would explain that. Thank you. That answers that question. Okay, thank you.
And then everything, then everything slopes to the proposed stone or store water infiltration trench.
Right, now it makes more sense and why you have those. Why those contour lines are bold then are more, like I said, they're straight, you know. And that makes more sense that it's a more consistent pitch. Okay, now, my question is. Now, my question is on the, um, encroachment onto this parcel. By the property at two thirty-five South Eleventh Street, I believe it was. Um, that's something unusual too. So my question is, a legal question, should there be? Yeah, there either a conveyance or an easement, um, so it's clear whose responsibility. That house, that house is, not the, not the running parking authorities or the city of Rennings. And I would think also an easement would be appropriate too, so that the homeowner could access the side of the house for maintenance and so forth. I, I think that should be cleared up while we're reviewing this, reviewing this plan.
Will, are you referring to, uh, the portion of the property on South Eleven Street?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a comment about that.
Yeah, that's why. Yep.
Emily, is that the one that, uh, the part of the property is located on this property? The adjacent property.
And so, um, what it is, it's the little baker's alley portion of it. Encroaches into their lot. Um, if you look on the screen, I'm sharing the street view. It's pretty much this portion.
Emily, we can't see.
Well, fortunately, encroaching that little bump out on the house.
Yeah. And it is shown on the plan, and I think that the resolution would be to deed it into onto. The house, to the house. Thanks. Especially now that we don't need as much. Well, that doesn't really help. Yeah, it, it, that would, that would remedy that situation.
Yeah, that's, that's, that makes sense to me. That's one, that's one option. Now that I see, I didn't see that. So it's a, it's actually a grocer's alley is the. Baker's alley is something different. Actually, I looked this up, but it's, um, that makes sense then. And, um. To convey it. So we would have to, this plan then would have to be revised to be a subdivision as well then.
Or an annexation, you have to.
Or, right.
Over to, uh, that land, and then that landowner would have to be in agreement.
Right, that's true. It's a subdivision. Yeah, that's right. That's right. Very good. It would be a subdivision. Of this parcel and an annexation or consolidation to the other. Right.
I, I, I would recommend too that, um, that, that, um. The deed plot for that adjacent lot also be plotted on it because there may be an overlap. Uh, we don't know if the two properties actually meet at the property line or if there is some sort of an overlap there. So all we can see on the plan is the city property. I don't know if McCarthy has done that already or not.
The address to that property is two thirty-five.
Do that, or will?
Thanks, Will. Yeah, that's, that actually seems very important. I didn't get a chance to look at, um. Look at plans, um, so. I think, uh, that'll make a lot of sense. Hey, uh, do the commissioners have, uh, anything, anything, any other, um, comments or questions?
No, I would just say because I don't know what recommendation is from staff, but I would think that because. The plan is cha- going to change because of the RV spaces being taken away, we would have to have a new plan presented. And apart from this subdivision annexation facet, so I, I think it would be appropriate to table it. What does the staff recommend?
I agree with that.
Yeah, yes, yes. Excuse me?
I said, I agree with that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Um, because they, this, um, yeah, this, this will work, uh. Uh, work out better if, once everybody meets at the site and does a little bit of, uh. A little bit of work on, on this, uh, neighboring thing also.
Planning, which we need?
Yeah, yeah.
Public teeth.
Come on, yeah, anywhere.
Sign in there.
Yeah, just sign in and have a seat.
See, so we're saying, okay, uh. Our, our Vs are just not allowed, period, or that this is not designed for our.
Uh, Emily knows the answer to that one.
What was the question?
Are you saying, Emily, that RVs are not allowed or it's just not well designed for our?
The first one, um, they're not typically allowed in general, but then their decision letter from the zoning hearing board from their, uh, variance appeal. Um, they did not grant that variance to allow the RV parking.
All right.
Tell the guy that we have a technical meeting that we're going to schedule. All right, very good. Um. Okay, if there's nothing else on this project, um, because of the, of the changes that need to be made. Uh, to the plan, to reflect, um, the zoning hearing board decision, um. The, uh, recommendation is tabled. Uh, do I hear a motion to table? Yes. Okay, Peter? Second?
Second.
Hey, Nelson? Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed? Okay, very good. Um. This, that, what, what Will was saying about fire station. Um, Steve is, uh, we weren't on council in this one. Discussion happened, so we can talk about that. All right, very good. We, uh, now moving on, uh. We have plans, plans requiring reaffirmation, uh, one oh eight. The Sixth and Spring Parking Lot at the, that is the south. That is the southeast corner of, uh, of Sixth and Spring. Uh, the work there is actually finished, um, and, uh, they are, they are using it.
Yes, northeast.
Northeast, okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, northeast, yeah. Obviously getting tired. I live a block from there. You would think I would know. So, um. Yeah, so, so everything's done, everything's done with this thing. So I'll let Jerome, um. Yeah, the, the question came up, uh, uh, for discussion was, uh, uh, I think the zoning office had initiated the, the conversation is. Is Penn Dot done with this project? And, uh, uh, the answer was that there was a small segment or. Well, about fifty feet wide, um, along Spring Street, uh, that was, the curbing was incomplete. Sidewalk was incomplete and, uh, then the grading work behind it was, was incomplete. Uh, we did a site inspection on, uh, November thirteenth and it has, has now been completed. Uh, so that was the only remaining item that was, uh, necessary. That is a Penn Dot improvement, uh, that was. Required for this project. It may have something else on that, too.
Yeah, the, the only thing is typically Penn Dot does a closure for their HOPs. There's, there's an outstanding permit. And they'll send somebody out at some point in time to inspect it to make sure it was done correctly. I don't know that that should. Slow us down from any, you know, city approval. Um, I haven't had a chance. Actually, it's Elvin's going to go out and do the inspection there, but. I mean, if it's done and it meets our conditions, Public Works will just simply tell you that we, you know, we approve the, the completed work. I've seen the pictures of it. It, it looks good. Jerome, I think Hawk Valley, you've, you've inspected it?
Yeah, it was done on the, I was there on the thirteenth and I, I did realize it was done, uh, but yeah, it, it's now completed.
Yep.
All right. Are there any question, any questions on, on this project from the commissioners? Okay, do I hear a motion to reaffirm the Sixth and Spring Parking Lot and Development Plan PC twenty twenty-two dash one zero eight? Origin, originally conditionally approved on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, resolution number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll move it.
Good. Thank you, Will. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, James. Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, very good. I think we have that reaffirmed. Okay, next, next up, we have our zoning map amendment for two tw- two twenty-nine, two forty-three and two forty-five Washington Street. And I'll hand it over to, uh, Jerome. Yeah, so we, uh, completed a review. Uh, for, uh, the record in, in order to, uh, consider the. Uh, zoning map amendment. This is as a result of the Goggle Works two, uh, land development plan and annexation plan. Um, as you may recall, uh, two twenty-nine, uh, Washington Street is, uh, part of this project. That's the, that's the. Parcel of land that does contain the building, which does contain, uh, all the proposed uses as the commercial kitchen. And food, uh, bank, uh, to support healthy harvest, a day, uh, uh, a day school. And care facility, residential apartments, artists, uh, studio offices, educational facilities and offices. And, and so forth. So I mean, that, that project is still in the midst of being completed. Um, in order to facilitate, uh, these improvements for the, that are required for the project, uh, Goggle Works then that's. What, um, annexed parcels two, or parcels two forty-three and two forty-five Washington. Street, those are located in the R five district, R, R three district and, um, two twenty-nine is located in the CC zoning district. So we did not want to see a split parcel of land going through, uh, to. Uh, from, eh, within the same property or splitting the same property. So that's, that's the basis for the, uh. The zoning map amendment. Uh, the applicant did submit the, all the requirements that are necessary. There are some issues that will need to be resolved prior to, uh, the plan being, uh. Or I'm sorry, the proposal being considered by council. Uh, also want to make note that, uh, this. Uh, application does not represent, uh, spot zoning, uh, since the adjacent properties to the south and to the west. Are also located CC zoning district. Uh, but the, but procedures that are going to be necessary for this to continue is the city of Rennings, um. Uh, Community Development Department, the zip planning and zoning office will need to review this. Um, zoning office has already made a staff review. On this project and this could facilitate the, the planning review. Uh, the applicant, uh, shall submit, uh, to the city of running planning commission. Uh, this application has been submitted and you can consider making a recommendation tonight, although we're not under any. Specific deadline. So it's this, we can't do it at this meeting or at the December meeting. Uh, the application has been submitted to the Burks County Planning Commission for review and consideration, and we just got back that review letter today. Uh, a neighborhood meeting shall be coordinated and held in order to present the application, uh, to, uh. To the public so that they, those comments can be considered. That's a prerequisite comment or a condition that is required by city council. Uh, the applicant in conjunction with the, uh, city, the applicant in conjunction with the city of Rennings. Would then schedule the, the public hearing. The public hearing will be subject to public notice. Uh, the public, uh. Advertisement will need to be completed and property would need to be posted as well as the recommendations to be considered. City council then has a, a public hearing and that's subject to public notice. The, uh, city council would then consider, uh, everything at a future then public meeting. Uh, which would then, if, if that's adopted, uh, then within a certain time period, ten days. Uh, the, the amendment would need to be submitted back to the Burks County Plan Commission for their files. So that concludes it. So you have the option today to consider and make your recommendation. Uh, city council, I don't think has this on the radar yet. Okay. But, uh. We, we, planning commission, I think, is aware of the project, uh, it was the two parcels of land that were demolished. So there is no improvements on the property at this point. Um, do you have anything to add, Emily?
Um, no, just that, um, the Burks County Planning Commission's letter. Says that it is consistent with their comprehensive plan twenty thirty update. Um, and then just the regular general comments about no split zoning, which is what this, um. Map amendment will address, so that we have split zoning. Um, and that's, that's it. So there were no adverse comments from the county.
So there's now we're going to be. Uh, communicating to. Then the president will be. So now, i- i- if, once you make, once the planning mission makes the recommendation, it goes back to the applicant to schedule the, uh, the neighborhood meeting. And then also the, to coordinate with the city clerk on schedule. Correct. And then also, I understand there's also an ordinance that needs to be drafted. Michelle Mayfield sent an email out earlier, uh, today about, uh, that. And I think you responded to say that, that planning staff will take care of that. So, yeah, it's, we just need to go back and forth. Uh, whatever needs to be done at this point to get moving forward. So.
You know the neighborhood meeting was held yet?
No, I, I haven't coordinated anything. Uh, I'm assuming, I, we submitted this in August, so I was assuming that it was moving along. I. So we got the letter. I was surprised that, you know, that we had to have the public meeting, which I should have known, but, uh, we'll have to schedule that. I was waiting for the planning commission recommendation before I went ahead with that, so.
Any way that I can help, feel free to reach out.
Okay.
Contact information, but I think it's a little, it's going to be good if you certainly at least send a email communication to council president.
Okay, all right.
And our, and let them.
Okay.
This, this project is our city writing.
Correct.
That is the, uh.
Yes.
It's a different legal entity than Goggle Works.
Correct.
Or did they ever join some point in time or is it?
The Goggle Works one is a separate entity. This is, this is our city writing. Yeah. The, the project that they were calling the land development plan for this project is Goggle Works two, two.
Goggle Works two, yeah, but it's an option. So you have a legal entity.
Yes, correct.
Correct.
Yeah, we had, we had gotten the zoning relief for the, uh, residential units. And then as you, or where, as Jerome indicated, there's helping Howard's Kitchen and then there's also BCIU was there. Yeah, so all of that, yeah, we went through the land development process for all of that and then this came up. So that's what we're trying to. Button it up and cloak to get this recorded. So hopefully I can do it within the ninety K window because we just reaffirmed this plan last month. So, we'll keep moving forward.
Uh, yeah, I, I think if, if, uh. The recommendation to city. It's recommendation city council. So, uh, you're, you're driven with it, Peter, I certainly. I'm good. Okay, I like the motion. Okay.
That's what I like to hear.
Yeah, no, because, uh, yeah.
Well, I was going to, for the record. Okay, so, uh, the motion is to, um, to recommend, um. to recommend, um, recommend the city council to make the uh zoning map amendments as, as presented for two twenty-nine, two forty-three and two forty-five Washington. Right, okay, and uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah. Okay, um, question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed? Okay, there you go, Scott.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. I was just gonna ask.
Yes, and uh
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and of course, if uh anything comes up, you know, just, just get in touch with us.
Uh, yeah, I did not see a copy of the uh planning commission, county planning commission review letter.
Just came out today.
Okay. What's that? Okay, that's fine. I mean, perfect.
Good thing is, in that area, you have a couple of locations that you're able to utilize. I mean, for the Goggle Works itself, it's a central spot on the Spanish center. It's a one hundred north front street. And I say that because my full-time job is state road Johani. I've been in one hundred north front street, so you get a lot of the elder uh folk over there.
Yeah, I gotta contact the client and owner and get that moving, so they, they're aware of it and that they can also recommend space. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Everybody have a good evening and a good Thanksgiving.
Hey, hey, Scott, this is Tim. Before, before you leave, I've got, I've got a Mitsubishi chemical question. Staff received an email today that uh somebody has painted no parking on Alton Avenue uh, on the other side of the curb from the, from the new expansion there on Alton Avenue for Mitsubishi Chemical. Do you recall there being no parking? Do you know anything about no parking on Alton Avenue at Mitsubishi?
I was, I looked at the email as well, because it went to, uh, to Mike. At Mitsubishi and I don't, I looked through the drawings, I don't see anything on there. So he's aware of it, he responded, it said basically they're gonna go back, it's, it repainted.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And, and who, who is Mike again? Can, can you give me that contact?
Molesky at uh Mitsubishi. He was part of it, he was
Yeah.
Definitely has email address, he was part of the email chain.
Oh, good, good, all right, very good. Thanks for getting that closure, appreciate it.
All right, are you talking?
No, no, no problem.
If I may, are you talking about the north side of Alton?
Yes. Yes, it was painted yellow. I, I guess maybe uh Mitsubishi did it, but it came in as a question to uh the, the city clerk and it went all around staff. And uh, I guess even, even uh, uh Scott got, got the email.
I had, had emailed um Mike from Mitsubishi and Scott after I got that email, so um responded right away. I did forward you to him, so you have his contact.
Okay, okay. Well, it sounds like he's been notified, so we just need to get back to Lily and Shelley, let her know.
Yeah, it came as a surprise to me, I wasn't aware of it.
Scott is correct, there, there is no, nothing on the plan.
Yeah, there was something on the plan.
Right.
So. Okay.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, uh. Next up, um. Okay, uh, next up is uh, uh, our, the zoning amendments that we're working on. Uh, first one is parking and loading.
We have been, uh, we have submitted this to, to the county for the review. Uh, the foundation will come in the next two weeks, so we should be able to look at this, uh, make a recommendation in our next meeting of December.
Yeah, it was also submitted to Redding Parking Authority.
Yes, that was submitted, but not that wrong.
So, once they get their review over to, that's something I see what they, their recommendations. Uh, but this. Yeah. All right, um. Then, next, um. We have the home occupations.
Yes, um. Sorry.
Go ahead, Emily.
Okay, um, so the, the next of our home occupations and the CCMC district, this is just um more of a intro slash notification to the commissioners and to you, Jamie, as um liaison to council. Uh, we will be making some very minor changes to the um zoning ordinance pertaining to those sections. Um, one is just fixing um a contradiction that happened with a previous um fee schedule approval and then for the CCMC district is just um switching some uses around to better support development downtown. Um, so those drafts have been sent to um, to everyone. If you wanna just take a look at everything and if you have any comments or questions, um, we'll open it up for discussion at this summer's meeting.
Yeah. The uh I apologize, I asked you if you were highlighting or whatever, Simon, what the changes were. Oh, yeah, they're, they're actually there. Perfect. Yeah, Emily, I, I assume Emily did all this work. The um Oh, uh, Emily, the only thing that, that I saw was that on uh uh, for the home occupations. Where it says um in, under A two, it says no outdoor storage or display related to the home occupations shall be permitted. And when I looked up the definition, it act, it actually says no, when I looked up the definition, it kinda cleared it up for me when it said no outdoor storage or display of retail goods. Because when I read display at first, I was like, I was like thinking a sign, but number, number twelve covers the signs. So I don't know if that's clarification and you might wanna put in there.
It wasn't something we were considering for this round, but um, let me email you tomorrow then, just so you um because I think I understand what you're saying, but um, if we can just chat about it tomorrow then.
Yeah.
It wasn't on our radar.
So, yeah, it's just a, just a minor thing. So I'll send this over to you tomorrow morning with my, with my annotations.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, okay, very good. Any uh, any questions on these zoning amendments from, from the commissioners?
Yeah, would it be fair, Mr. Chairman, to characterize this, the, the second and third words really is just technical and not substantive at all?
Yeah, and I asked Michelle about that, uh, but we still do have to s- send them over to the Berks County Planning Commission for review.
Oh, sure, of course, yeah, but I've just said for every, the public and the council liaison and, and the rest of the body, of course, it, it it's, it's just technical things that we, we need, that need to be cleaned up from time to time, and I'm sure there's more probably coming as our staff continues to review everything thoroughly, comprehensively.
Yeah, and let me tell you, we love, we love that. We, we love uh the review. We love things to be cleaned up. We know that uh change is inevitable and so are the times and that, you know, every now and then ordinances that need to be reviewed and certainly uh, uh, to have a more effective uh downtown corridor, uh, or, uh, how would I say? Bring people back to the city.
Yeah.
Business friendly, yes. Okay, um, we'll move on to the reports, um transit oriented development ordinance.
We did have a discussion about that part of that last, last, in our last meeting. Uh, the consultant has a question, had a question that we give him feedback by fourteenth. I made a special request for him to open up this window, especially to the commissioners to see if anyone of us still has any comment, so that we can sum up everything and share with him before he finalizes that part of the ordinance.
My main question to Simon was, uh, is, or uh, the, the product that they produce for the TOD overlay district, is this going to be in a draft form that we're going to be considering for municipal adoption? Or is it going, are they gonna be turning over their draft and then that we revise, make the edits uh, as we see fit, and then we're then steering the ship to submit to the county and then uh, planning commission approval, uh, recommendation and council approval.
From my understanding, once they finalize uh the ordinances, they are going to submit to us and of course, through the planning commission, because we'll have to be offered by our, our council. Uh, that is what I, what I know, but.
There are still some contradictions in here and it's all just like little edits here and there. Uh, and it's confusing because they're defining terminology uh within the overlay district. You have, we already have it defined or call it something else. Uh, and I'll just use a quick example, home occupation, they call live work units. Uh, and then there's built a line and building, building setback requirements. Uh, shared parking, we call common parking. Tree lawn, we call buffer strips. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of cross, uh, unless you are familiar with both ordinances, it is gonna be tough to navigate.
We need to have one language.
Exactly.
One set of definitions.
For all. So there, there's something, I mean, it's, it's, it's all minor things. The, the only significant thing that I saw was when it was getting to the SADO requirements and they were uh then providing their their own, or the overlay district would then have its own reduction in parking and that somewhat contradicts a little bit of what we're doing with the parking and loading requirements now. Uh, and I, I don't know if check to what their percentage is on bringing it down, but we could probably make the same modifications or similar in our own regulations. So, yeah, so it's, you're not reading two different provisions. You know, that would be difficult for someone who's trying to develop a site and utilize these requirements.
I, I think it would be critical that we were able to read from this, um, script. I'm wondering whether we can have a meeting, at least us, or us to look at those differences and make those recommendations more smartly, so that when we give him our final comments, he knows that this is how we're, not them, of our, from our side of the city.
You know, I, I gave some comments about some of the requirements. Or was it uh, ten percent of the units have to be uh suitable for
So yeah, the workforce, workforce, for workforce uh housing, yes, that's.
Which uh Trump shouldn't have stuck around with this, because uh, he would have a whole lot of things to say about this, but uh, he would argue that the benefits of the, of the cost, there, there's obligations, I think, as that's one of them. And there are some benefits. And the benefits do not make up for the obligations. In other words, that is not compelling. One of the, one of the carrots is to go higher, but you're not going high, I mean, what, what's ready is existing buildings. And nobody's gonna take any existing building higher.
No, that's, that's that's gonna be very difficult, yeah, so.
You know, the argument is uh, what, what good is an overlay if, if nobody wants to act on it?
Okay, it's, it's gotta be simple, straightforward and say, I can do this and I can, I while saying I can vi- envision the, the final product. Uh, this side.
And that'd make it economically viable for developers. I mean, we, we are in a scenario where the as is, is not compelling. At least not at the moment. Frizz will help here and there for that, for that zone. But otherwise, it's, it's not, it's, you know, uh, it's not compelling. Otherwise, you know, there'd be scatting all over the place. And, you know, we want something that's gonna trigger some amount of redevelopment. Well, for, for argue that the benefits aren't way they're, aren't way they're cost.
Yeah, I agree.
But because of another thing to put on the shelf.
Yeah, I think.
That's, that's a broad brush valuation, because that was in the details and, and I think this is an interesting concept. Got us, we've been up a little bit, otherwise.
I agree. And the, the other thing I was thinking about the other day was that um was that, you know, they put all this effort into it, but yet we have this, you know, Seventh Street, um, which the railroad tracks basically. Yeah, we have these wide sidewalks on either side that could show some sort of, could show some sort of development. Uh, and if, because a lot of times, you know, to get from like certain areas, um, like from uh let's say, let's say you want, you wanna go from the old community general hospital to uh, to uh, uh, the county services building. Easiest way to do that is walk down sidewalk on Seventh Street. Um, and, and yet there's no, you know, there, there's no plan.
Well, there is this vision zero plan, which I think is interesting.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, that talks about traffic circulation, in particular bicycle and pedestrian. And does, you know, if implemented, regardless, we would do certain things that would make it like pedestrian friendly.
And the, these guys are the ones who did the vision zero plan.
Are they?
Yeah, it's the same guys.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, I, I, that's, that's quite, well, so, I'm, I worry that it just becomes another thing that we have that.
Yeah, I mean, it's sometimes uh, yeah, you get thought of everything and then you put it in writing and then you give it to someone else and it's overwhelming. Yeah, and the uh and of course, this is not something that was initiated by the city, this was initiated by um, greater rel, greater revenue development, uh, not greater chamber.
Yours, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um. You know, I think, I think there are certain downtown cores of cities, although, you know, big cities that have you know, already a vibrant scene going on, development scene going on, this, this makes it interesting. Let's find it for that, that really urban core.
Did Maritz have any comments of, oh?
No, I don't, I didn't. So uh you know, I would, I would talk to the developers. Well, they, well, get them really excited. Of course, they're gonna give you a long, long laundry list of things that they would, yeah, but make it compelling and then you have to filter that as well. But at least you have a perspective there, because they are the ones that are going to trigger on some project to implement this document, right, they're the ones building something. So, well. I've heard from a couple of directions. Uh. It seems like one of the big carrots is this height. Relaxing it, relaxing the pipes, and it's just a non item.
You would have to tear it down and build it back up.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, how are how many places are is there an actual greenfield location or ground that's you're going to start from scratch? But there's there's a there's a handful of them, but not many.
I'm raising my hand for Emily because she said she can't figure out how to raise her hand.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm usually very much like. Able to to do this. Um I I just wanted to mention that um in some previous. Uh presentations that Simone Collins did regarding the TOD, they had spoken with some developers. Um on this and this the the entire thing of the TOD is also through the Greater Reading Chamber. So I'm assuming that. Other than those developers identified in in the Simone Collins presentations, there there have been other business entities, developers. That have been made aware and could have made their concerns and comments known. I just wanted to make that comment.
Well, I I think uh. Uh so again, the ten percent workforce service workforce workforce impaling. Uh that's just a nonstarter. That means that ten percent of the project is not going to be profitable for them.
Can I ask, are you concerned that this will actually stymie development or it just won't promote?
Well, it's it's uh it's not going to change the as is scenario. I mean, that's this, we've we've got, you know. Got the as is, right? There's just stuff happening here and there, but it's not enough to.
Is this going to entice someone to come in and say, yeah, I can I could redevelop a site or I can develop a a site from scratch using this group, these requirements and make a profit?
So this, you know. And to overlay district, we are hoping that we betray. And that that becomes an accelerator as well. That's not the guarantee that. Uh. Uh whether they become trade friendly in this country, that happen. My opinion. So uh. Now that doesn't negate the value of of it if the trade is still future.
Yeah.
Creating. Relaxing some of the requirements that we have. And today, higher density for especially where people want to walk to work or we want to encourage them to live work. That has a lot of value.
Well, we might be putting the the tender for a little movement.
Why? Yeah, I mean, earlier it was too big, you know, it's like, well. There was a point of having uh zoning ordinances if you just say the bulk of downtown is in this overlay district. Just basically resets all the zoning requirements that here. So I got pared down to, I think, more appropriate level. It's my opinion. Uh. Now now let's, you know, put some teeth in so that people actually want to build. Leave it. Yeah. Thank you.
Another comment from another commissioner, you you have anything?
All right.
All right, um. Thank you. Okay, we will um. There are no other no other comments on the TOD coordinates. We will uh move on to next here, the. Uh Fifth and Penn Comfort Stations um. That uh Simon. Jesse. Myself and Kyle Zebra. Actually descended.
Detroit.
Below Fifth and Penn uh 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 to take a look at the old at at the old comfort stations. Because. You know, one of the things that that especially Simon's thinking of is what kind of amenities? Could we do to to bring people, bring people back uh into the city? Uh and. So we we went, we went down there that, you know. Fixing that, fixing those is not feasible. But then. That reminded me of the self cleaning bathrooms. That they have that they like, I'm sure you've seen them, Peter, I've seen. And uh we actually found an American company that builds. So uh. So uh we're going to try to get them here in for January for the January meeting.
Do you have any?
Talk to them.
I'm sorry, do you have any photographs of your uh of your site visit?
Oh, yes, I do. I will send them to you, Will.
Uh yeah, for everybody, yeah.
Yeah, I I uh, yeah, yeah, I'll I'll send them out. Uh because, yeah, we. I took pictures while while I was down there and they ended up pretty decent, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate.
See your scenario still.
Does it fall in work?
We didn't try it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was wondering about them too for the whole downtown. Yeah, I was wondering about it too and 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 Simone Collins' presentation, they explained that there was, you know, too much damage or whatever. I thought, okay, but. Well, what what is the condition? What does it look like? Plus, they said there were decorations down there. I was wondering if those were salvageable or whatever. So, yeah, but is there some other? I guess my thought was, could there be some alternate? Alternate idea, you know? And so, yeah, that's that's definitely interesting. I'm glad you glad you took the time to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, the uh, of course, the first first thing you notice when you climb down there is because. Where the shaft is, it's actually a low spot in the in the sidewalk. So when you walk down there, you got to walk into six inches of mud before. Before you can actually.
It might have been four.
It might have been four inches, but yeah. Yep, but luckily Kyle Zebra was there with us, uh who's from Public Works.
He brought a change of boots.
Yeah, he brought a change of boots. He was prepared. Well, um, yeah, so so that's uh uh that was that was our fun. Um last Friday. And uh and I'll like get those pictures out to to everyone. Uh next on the calendar, we have uh our twenty twenty six calendar. Which I took a look at and then looks looks good to me. Um I don't know if anyone has any questions about it. So um. I'm not sure who drew who drew this up, but I double checked the I double checked the dates and all the dates are 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 correct. And every and everything, so um. So uh. If there's no objection, um.
It's the same schedule essentially, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same schedule as this year, so workshops on the third. Tuesday and. Um our regular voting meeting on the fourth Tuesday, except for uh November and December, which will be on. We'll have a regular meeting. On the third on the third Tuesday of November and December. Uh to uh match the um. Uh what do you call it? Uh the scheduling with what with what Reston City Hall does because they really don't want any meetings the same week as Thanksgiving or Christmas. Yep, right, exactly. So um. So do I hear a motion to approve the twenty twenty six Planning Commission meeting calendar and to authorize the planning staff to advertise it? In the paper of record and post the schedule on the city website?
I'm moving.
Yeah, Will? I'll take us the second.
No.
Okay, question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, both of us? Very good. We have a twenty twenty six. Fall up here. Okay, we have no no public left. So. Warmer. Um so uh our our last meeting for twenty twenty five will be a regular meeting on December sixteenth. Tuesday, December sixteenth at six P M. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
I hear a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I have a little announcement here. Um, yeah, I think most of the people in the room know, but Wayne, I'm not sure you do, but this may be my last meeting for Planning Commission. Because at the end of the year, I'm planning on retiring. So I just wanted to let you know that uh that uh, yeah, if 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 there's no one there to attend. December's meeting, I may do that, but right now we're hopeful that we'll have somebody in place to do that. So I just want to express my appreciation for the. For the Planning Commission, especially you, Wayne and Will, I've I've been working with you for years. It has been a real pleasure working with you and I just want to be able to say that, uh, yeah, I although I'm looking forward to the to the retirement, it I I will miss uh this group. I've said it before and I'll say it again that I think. Uh this group of commissioners, uh the staff, the consultants. Uh absolutely the best that I've worked with in the thirty whatever years that I've been doing this. Um I've seen a lot worse. I'm sure Jerome and Michelle, they've seen some worse. Uh this group really gets things done and uh. Uh it's been a privilege for me to be part of that. I I thank you for, you know, making me part of that and making this all work and getting some things done. So I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, and Tim, yes, it has been a great, great pleasure working with you and even when we were doing the Citadel of.
Yeah, that's right. Absolutely, way back.
And that was that was before uh Tim came here and joined joined the city.
Yeah.
So it's all we.
Yeah, yeah, we did a lot of, we got a lot of things done here in the city. That good stuff.
And thank you, Tim, for your service and your and your kind remarks, and I was actually afraid. Because you weren't at the last meeting that you already had returned it and left before left before saying anything, so I'm glad that you had at least one more meeting and um. It's been a pleasure working with you and and it goes back in my case to what I was serving across the street when you were working on that Citadel project.
That's right.
In fact, I was going to, I was going to say for the good of the order, I was going to say thank you and Public Works. Because this Dupreng Street subway now is lit like broad daylight underneath. It was totally dark before, so thank you.
Good, finally, I finally got that. Now we just got to drain it.
Yeah, figure it out and drain it, yeah.
That's right, that's right. We pu- pu- Public Works is looking for replacement and we've uh been working with H R and. Uh there's actually, you know, a a couple of uh, you know, applicants that we've been looking at. I don't know all the details, but I've had a chance to. Be involved with that a little bit, and so they are making some progress. I hope it I hope it carries through. I I and I hope it's soon. Um, you know, because there's only a few more weeks, six more weeks left. Uh to the end of the year, so hopefully we can get bring somebody on board here before then and get them uh, you know, indoctrinated and in gear here with uh. Doing some engineering, keeping it working, keeping it flowing.
Yeah, are you a? Uh. A colleague of my wife's is is uh retiring from U G I. And are you in the same boat as he that 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 uh? Even though technically his last day is December thirty first. Uh they let him go last Monday because he has so much, he has so much vacation time and and other other. B T O time that that he doesn't need to work the rest of the year.
No, no, the way it works a little different with the city. I actually will be working a day or two in January to confirm that I get a whole year in. With the way the pension works, so uh I I say the end of the year, but it actually it'll be and then there will be some vacation paid out and things like that, so. It works a little different than U G I. But yeah, no, I'll be here to the end of the year, the end of the end of the this calendar year.
But thank you again, Tim.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your service and congratulations, I think um. When I think of the future, I mean, it's inspirational to work so many years with the city, but then also be able to say those words. I look for the day to be able to say.
Yeah, you're not the only one. I hear that a lot, but then I hear a lot of people are retiring a- as well. There's been a lot of people retiring this year. David Hunter, who used to work here in zoning. He also retired this year too, so that was a surprise to me. But, yep.
Yeah.
It'll come, it'll come quicker than you think. Gee whiz.
Tim, you're always welcome to the city, even if it is.
Yeah, I know, I know. You don't want me to quit.
You know how to.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nelson.
Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, uh with that, uh do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Peter?
Second.
Hey, Nelson? Hey, question on the motion?
No question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed? Very good. We are out of order. Thank you very much again, everyone. Uh. Once again, a lot of information. That uh that we've gone over.
Yeah, this meeting at least was a little different.
Yeah.